Claire and Connor, it's six o'clock. Are we ready to go?
Yes, we're ready when you are.
Okay, great. It is May 6th that I am calling to order the Missoula City Council meeting. I am clearly not the mayor, but I am standing in to act as the mayor for this meeting tonight. She's unable to attend. So, we have present, I'll just run through. We have Jennifer Savage, Eric Melson, myself, Mirta Becerra, Sandra Vasika, Sierra Farmer, and Bob Campbell. I do anticipate Stacy Anderson coming a little late, so let's just keep an eye out for them. But we do have seven of us, so we have a quorum. And we have minutes from April 1st, April 8th, and April 15th to approve. Are there any changes to those minutes? Oh, and I forgot, I need to do the pledge. Okay, so everyone stand up. Or whoever wants to stand up, stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks. And now back at it. We have a committee schedule for this next week for May 8th, and that is attached, so feel free to look through that. Number four is we have 4.1 Neighborhood Council Updates. I don't think we have any Neighborhood Council Updates unless someone is here for that. We do not. So we have a number of proclamations, which I will go through, and I know the mayor was disappointed to not be here and able to read these, but I will do my best to do it for her. So, "The city of Missoula and Missoula County, Montana. Whereas Ron and Nancy Erickson loved the Missoula community in which they lived for almost 60 years, and whereas the Erickson family remained entranced by the beauty of Montana throughout their lives and dedicated themselves to preserving its natural wonders, Ron through his work in local conservation organizations and the state legislature, and Nancy through her art. And whereas the Erickson demonstrated the power of local activism through their involvement in peace, environmental, and art action, and whereas even a partial list of the local, even a partial list of the local arts, peace, and environmental groups they worked with boggles the mind. Patty Canyon Ladies Salon, Missoula Art Museum, Montana Museum of Art and Culture, Jeanette Rankin Peace Center, Missoula Women for Peace, Western Montana Scientists for Public Information, Concerned Citizens for Equality Environment, Montana Environmental Information Center, Save the Fort, Missoula Open Space Program, and its Mount Jumbo Campaign, and whereas the Ericksons were committed to the U M's Environmental Studies and Art Programs, which they have supported financially with scholarships and by mentoring dozens of students and colleagues who followed their examples and now work in many service-oriented nonprofits, businesses, agencies, and elected bodies in the Missoula area. And now therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula, and Dave Strohmeyer, Juanita Verro, and Josh Slotnick of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners in the state of Montana hereby recognize the 12th Day of May 2024 as Ron and Nancy Erickson Day. Is there, that is a very long list of things that they've done for our community, and I appreciate that we're doing this and have known them. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf? Please come up and let me, if you would state your name and spell your last name, that would be great.
Vicky Watson, last name is W A T S O N, and I was a professor in the Environmental Studies Program for almost 40 years and knew them well. And I wanted to come today to thank Mayor Davis and the council and the county commissioners for honoring two of our most giving and effective citizens, Ron and Nancy Erickson. The proclamation is just a brief outline of their gifts to us. From the air above us to Mount Jumbo, down to the river, and all in between, they worked very hard for Missoula's quality of life. U M President Bodnar also wrote a letter of appreciation in which he briefly describes their great gifts to U of M, helping build the outstanding programs in environmental studies and arts, as you mentioned, through their mentoring of students and serving as role models of engaged citizens, and providing considerable financial support as well. They showed us how to carry out the charge of the Montana Constitution to all citizens. We are all called on to take responsibility for providing all citizens with a clean and healthy environment, and we thank them for their great role modeling. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. It's nice to have people like that in our community. We are fortunate. We have a couple more proclamations. This is Municipal Clerks Week, so thank you. There are clerks that are in the back and around. So, "Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a vital part of local government and among the oldest of public servants, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Missoula City Clerk provides a professional link among Missoulians, the city's governing bodies, its administration, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Missoula clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of their offices through participation in education programs and their professional associations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the important role and the numerous accomplishments of the office of the Missoula City Clerk. Now therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana hereby recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2024, as Municipal Clerks Week." And I would like to add to that, that City Council would cease to operate very well at all, if at all, if we did not have the clerks helping us and continually keeping us organized and running by the rules that we have and such. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of us? Oh, Mirta, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to our current clerk for keeping us on track, and she came in at a very challenging time during our cycle on City Council, so much appreciate all your work, Claire.
Yeah, thank you so much. Those were two fun proclamations to read. We do have one a bit more serious, but very, very important. So, "Whereas Missoula County and the city of Missoula join an international effort to heighten awareness in Montana, the Great Plains region, and the United States for murdered and missing Indigenous women, and whereas there is not a comprehensive estimate of Indigenous women who are missing and murdered in the United States, but many factors contribute to this crisis, such as fear, stigma, legal barriers, racism, sexism, and the devastating levels of violence in the U.S. And whereas Native Americans are two and a half times more likely to experience sexual assault crimes compared to other races, and one in three Indigenous women reports having been raped during her lifetime. And whereas 39% of victims of domestic violence and most violence against, 39% of victims of domestic violence and most violence against Indigenous women is perpetrated by non-native men, except in rural Alaska villages, and whereas Native Americans are four times more likely to go missing in Montana than other demographics, and Montana is among the top five states for missing and murdered Indigenous women. And whereas Indigenous women are murdered at 10x the rate of other ethnicities, and murder is the third leading cause of death for Indigenous women. And whereas for more than 20 years, there have been awareness-raising efforts in Canada, and the Murdered and Missing Indigenous Women Awareness Day seeks to build support by increasing awareness in the United States. Now therefore, we, the Missoula Board of County Commissioners and the Mayor of the City of Missoula, do hereby continue to proclaim May 5th, 2024, as Murdered and Missing Indigenous Women Awareness Day." Is there anyone here to speak to that? And state your name and spell it for the clerk.
Ally Harrison, Ward 3, H A R R I S O N. I debated about saying anything tonight, but since I attended the MMIP event last night, it was such an amazing event, I just wanted to quote Micah Westwolf's mother, who said, "We can't afford to stay silent and indifferent." Thank you for the proclamation, and we stand with you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate that you attended that and that it took place here. So, all right, so that is the end of our proclamations. We have one public hearing, and this is kind of a weird one, because it is a public hearing, but it is not something that we, as a body, have any decision-making role in. We simply offer the space for the public hearing to be held. So, this is a public forum for the University of Montana Residence Hall. It's a public forum on the application from the University of Montana to vary from Title 20 zoning code requirements regarding construction of a new residence hall. Under state and local law, the council's role is to conduct this public forum and to take public comment. It does not have a decision-making role. So, we are just offering this up, and if anyone would like to make public comment on this, this is the forum to do that. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience standing up, and I do not see any hands online. So I believe that unless there's comment, do you see a hand online?
Hi, Cassie Trippard, Planning Supervisor. There is actually a presentation for this item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that. Okay, you go ahead and do the presentation then. Thanks.
Okay, can everyone see my slides? Okay?
Yep.
Okay. So, hi, I'm Claire Lovelace, an Assistant Planner in the Community Planning, Development, and Innovation Division. CPDI has received notice from MMW Architects on behalf of the University of Montana of their intent to construct a new residence hall at the corner of Arthur Avenue and East Beckwith Avenue. The proposed project includes the installation of a new residence hall, a surface parking lot, and replacement of an existing ground sign. The University of Montana is a government agency, and City Council is authorized to hold a public hearing when an agency proposes to develop or use public land contrary to Title 20 zoning regulations. In this case, U M is proposing a ground sign that does not meet the sign chapter of zoning and landscaping that does not meet Title 20 landscaping requirements. The proposed development will be located at the corner of Arthur Avenue and East Beckwith Avenue. The University of Montana is zoned OP-3, public lands and institutional. Parcels located to the south and west of the subject property are zoned R-5.4 residential. Universities are a permitted use in OP-3 zoning districts. The applicable regional plan is the 2035 R. Missoula City Growth Policy. Per the growth policy, the University of Montana's land use designation is public and quasi-public. This designation is for land with structures or uses such as schools, airports, community buildings, cemeteries, and utility facilities. Land currently owned by public agencies are held in reserve. For future development or public facilities also receive this designation. Surrounding land use designations include public and quasi-public and residential medium. There is a concentration of residential uses surrounding the University of Montana. The surrounding uses of the university are compatible with the land use designation outlined in the growth policy. The OP-3 zoning district is a current relatable district in the public and quasi-public land use designation, and the R-5.4 zoning district is a current relatable district in the residential medium land use designation. Title 20, Section 208595, and state law states that government agencies may propose to use public land contrary to local zoning regulations. Whenever an agency proposes to use public land contrary to local zoning regulations, a public hearing must be held to allow for comment on the proposed use, and the agency shall attend the public hearing. City Council does not have the power to deny or condition the request. The University of Montana may move forward with a proposal following the public forum, however they may consider comment. Title 20 defines agency as a board, bureau, commission, department, and authority or other entity of state or local government. The University of Montana is considered a state government agency, and are permitted to vary from zoning through the public forum process. Here are some images of existing conditions at the corner of Arthur Avenue and East Beckwith Avenue. There is an existing ground sign that will be replaced and an existing parking lot that will be minimized with a new residence hall. Here are some renderings of the proposed development. The proposed residence hall will be 600 beds. The proposed building is approximately 77 feet tall. The maximum height for buildings in OP-3 districts is 100 feet. So, the proposed development will not comply with two requirements of zoning code. Per the landscaping requirements in Title 20, the removal of trees with a diameter breast height of 6 inches or greater single stem must be mitigated by providing one or more replacement trees with the total combined DBH that is at least equal to the total diameter breast height of trees that are removed. The proposed development includes removing 26 trees from the site. Approximately 201 inches of DBH is proposed to be removed from the site. The proposed planting plan accommodates 70 new trees, and the total DBH of proposed trees is 130 inches. The existing ground sign at the corner of the parcel is proposed to be replaced with a larger ground sign that is larger than the maximum allowed area in OP-3 zoning districts. The maximum allowed area is 24 square feet, and the sign is proposed to be 72 square feet. The proposed sign exceeds the maximum permitted area by 48 square feet. Additionally, the sign will be eight feet off the ground, which exceeds the six-foot height requirement in the OP-3 zoning districts. Staff do not have a recommended motion as no action is required. Thank you for your time. City staff are available for questions after a quick presentation from the applicant.
Great, thanks. Will you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Sure. Don MacArthur, M A C A R T H U R. I'm here representing MMW Architects as well as the university. I think online we also have a landscape architect that is working with our team, Dorothy Ferris from Methune. And I see behind me also folks from the university, Jamil Chowdhury and Connor Staley. So we have folks here to represent all different aspects of this, if you need more information. I think Claire did a great job of sort of outlining what we're looking for in terms of things that don't exactly comply with the ordinance, but I wanted to say a few words about the project in general. Obviously, as we were hired to be helping lead the design on the project, we learned about the average age of the rooms on campus. That is, I think, 66 years is the average age of a room, and so it's a very dire need for campus to modernize and update the room stock. This is 600 new beds, quite a new, good-sized project. And as Claire said, it's in the parking lot that is in the corner there at Arthur and Beckwith. So, we're excited as the project develops. We're just about to go out to bid right now. In fact, we are out to bid. We anticipate the project, hopefully, starting construction later in the summer. You know, a couple of things that I would say about the project that are maybe not obvious from the presentation, but as we think about modernizing the dorms, rooms on campus, part of it is to recognize that things are changing in our environment, and there's a need for cooling and control of smoke and other things that has not been, you know, the history of Missoula. So, this is part of the modernization. The other part is just to think about how are we attracting students to the campus and making sure that we're really selling a story of great place it is to live and great place to go to school. So I don't know what exactly, if there's more information, but where other folks may want to comment from the design and owner team. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I appreciate. I have a question for you, actually, and I apologize. I didn't realize there was any presentation. Sometimes we just open these hearings and we have no presentation, and people just comment if they'd like to. I'm just curious. So, will this be, and maybe you just said this, will this be adding to the total number of dorm rooms available on campus, or is there, I mean, how many, I guess, what's the overall that's planned for?
So maybe I would welcome Jamil. Do you want to speak to that? We'll get the right folks.
Yeah. I'm Jamil Chowdhury, head of planning, design, and construction at the university. So, we have about 1,850 beds on campus currently, and 600 new beds that we're planning on adding are brand-new beds, but it's anticipation of the future demolition of Craig Dunwoy and Elrod, which are, as Don said, really old. Elrod by itself is about 100 years old, and not getting any younger like I am. So, we're trying to modernize and stay up to date with our competition and do what's right for incoming freshman students. So, we will essentially be net zero after I'd say year four, year five from now.
Okay, great, thanks. I was just curious. I know many universities around the country are struggling for housing for students, and I also, having two children in college right now, know that dorms are a big seller, although I think one of mine is in one that's about 66 years old. So, thank you. I appreciate that. Are there any other, I mean, again, we're not a decision-making body on this, but if there are any other questions that council has, I think it's good for the public to know more. Daniel, you want to go? Oh, before I go to you, please note that Daniel, Kristen, and Stacy are all present.
I guess I'll throw a couple of questions out there. With all the construction over the last few years, what is the total net, like, gain or loss of total housing units on campus? You know, with Abra Hall getting converted and all this other construction, what's the total number and shift, you know, over, you know, this decade, I suppose?
Yeah, so like I said, we are about 1,850 beds right now. We will add these 600 new beds, so by the fall of '27, once this new dorm is finished, yes, we will be 600 beds positive, but what we're really doing is shifting the students who would be housing Craig Dunwoy and Elrod into the new dorm. And so we'll close down Craig Dunwoy and Elrod, right, in anticipation of eventually tearing them down. So, once they're torn down, at some point down the road, we will see how our enrollment is growing and see whether a second dorm is warranted, right? So, as you know, our student count isn't growing rapidly, so we don't really have a great need to have 3, 4, 5,000 beds, right? So, we're about 1,800 students in the So we're about 1,800 students in the, in the incoming freshman class, and so we're just trying to take care of those with some room for modest growth.
Thanks. Okay, is there, thanks, I appreciate the information. I think it's good for people to understand what's going on there. And, oh, and Eric has a question or comment.
Yeah, thanks. Just a question about the replacement for the parking spots. So I know that parking is contentious on campus already and in the neighborhoods surrounding. Just wondering what the plan is to either change behaviors, incentivize new modalities, or to replace those parking spaces? And I know that you guys have a new parking director, so hopefully Bill can help on that at some point.
Yeah, happy to answer that. So yes, as soon as we realize that this is the only piece of land that we can actually build the new dorm on, which is a parking lot, we will be losing about 311 car parking spaces in that lot. There'll be about 25 to 26 that go back in. So to offset that loss, what you'll see at council next Monday is the parking plans that we have. So you guys should be having some insight into the future development. So we do plan on adding about 211, right, Connor? About 200? Yeah, it's about 210 new parking spaces on, on the campus. So net overall, yes, we will still be about 100 down from what we are currently, but at least we're making strides towards that. And in year four or five from now, once Craig Dunway, Elrod do come back, there's land there available that we could, in the future, you know, add some more parking spaces there. And we do obviously, as always, encourage carpooling, riding the mountain line bus, biking, walking. So that's been on our cards, I think, for the last 15, 20 years. Thank you.
And I can attest to, since I, since I ride the bus in with university students and through the university area all the time, I can attest there are a lot of university students on those buses, and they come very regularly, which is a great part of it. Okay, I don't see any other council with their hands up. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, well, I don't see any public comment, and I guess that's all of the presentation, unless there's something else you wanted to add, anyone online? Okay, so we will go ahead, and we have now given the public an opportunity to comment on this item, and I think at that point we have done what is necessary for the university to hold the public forum. So thanks, and I appreciate you coming in. And again, I apologize, I didn't realize there was a presentation. So stepping into this, this role, a little cold. So thank you, and we'll go on to the next. We don't have any new business tonight. We do have, number seven is public comments for items on the agenda, but I know that the mayor has been running that a little differently and just letting people comment on the consent agenda and on the committee reports separately. So in order to be consistent, I'm going to do it that way tonight as well. So we're going to go to the consent agenda. Connor, are you going to go ahead and do that?
Ah, yes, I'll be reading the consent agenda for tonight. Screen really quick.
And you know what, Connor? Connor, do you, do you mind? I guess I'll, I'll just read this really quickly. Items on the consent agenda, we all know what they, they are, what the consent agenda is, but I guess the public doesn't. So items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committee to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. We'll invite community comment on these items before we vote. Okay, take it away. Thank you.
Okay, so item 8.1 on the tonight's consent agenda is to ratify accounts payable claims for checks dated April 30th, 2024, in the amount of $1,310,772.10. Item 8.2 is to approve accounts payable claims for checks dated May 7th, 2024, in the amount of $1,548,483.82. Item 8.3 is confirming the mayor's appointment of Joseph Easton to the Parking Commission for a term beginning May 1st, 2024 and expiring on April 30th, 2028. Item 8.4 is confirming the mayor's appointment of Mike Steinberg, Parking Commission, to fill a vacated term, beginning immediately and expiring on April 30th, 2026. Item 8.5 is confirming the mayor's appointment of Pat McQ to the Cemetery Board for a term beginning May 1st, 2024 and expiring on April 30th, 2027. Item 8.6 is confirming the mayor's appointment of Aaron Fitzgerald to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board to fill a vacated term beginning immediately and expiring on September 30th, 2024. Item 8.7 is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign and record institutional controls in the form of restrictive covenants on real property at the Missoula White Pine Sash Facility. And then finally, item 8.8 is to set a public hearing on May 13th, 2024, to hold a public forum on an application from the University of Montana to vary from Title 20 zoning code requirements regarding construction of four new parking lots in a welcome sign. Under state and local law, the council's role is to conduct this public forum and take public comment, but it does not have any decision-making role, and this will constitute the first reading. That is all the items.
Great, thanks. Appreciate that. Does council want to divide the question? Divide the consent agenda? Okay, I see no division, so we will go ahead and go to public comment on the consent agenda. If there's anyone that would like to comment on the consent agenda. Okay, I don't see anyone in the room, and I don't see anyone online, so we'll go ahead and do a roll. Actually, we'll go ahead and do a voice vote on this one. So get ready, everyone.
Okay, so doing a voice vote on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. That motion passes.
Okay, great, thanks. And we are going to go on to regular business. We have two things on the committee reports that did not come out of committee as a unanimous vote, and I think those that were not in the majority wanted to make comment on that. So the first item is the 9.1 point D. Point B, the appointment to the Missoula Redevelopment Agency, and this is for, to confirm the mayor's appointment of Carl England to the Missoula Redevelopment Agency for a term beginning May 1st, 2024 and expiring on April 30th, 2028. We've already seen this in committee, so there's no presentation, but would any of council like to make a comment? Okay, Daniel, go ahead.
I guess I'll just mostly repeat what I said on Wednesday, but the Missoula Redevelopment Agency Board can unilaterally spend taxpayer dollars in Missoula, and having people on, the same people on there for decades and decades in a row, I think it'd be good to consider term limits. But I think Mr. England has done a lot of good stuff on the board. However, I don't agree with using tax dollars to help with redevelopment and infrastructure towards bank and hotel redevelopments, and for that reason, I am going to vote against his, his reapportment onto the board.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, go, go ahead. We'll, we'll do this, and then we'll take public comment before we vote.
Thank you, ma'am president. I just had a question, perhaps my colleagues could answer. I'm just curious, does this board, do they get a stipend of any sort?
It's, it's all a voluntary board.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Jennifer, go ahead.
I just want to correct the record. The MRA Board does not have unchecked power.
Thanks, I didn't hear that, I appreciate that. Any other, oh, any other, okay, Daniel, go ahead.
I don't know if there's anybody from the MRA here or somebody that could speak to, to their power, but I'm just curious if the city council wanted to, say, not have that money go towards, like, First Security Bank redevelopment last year. Is there any way that we could have voted on that? Because we didn't have a vote on it as council. We had a vote a couple of months ago to make sure that, that the city council doesn't have to approve MRA expenditures unless there's a bond. So I'm just trying to understand where the checks and balances would be. Maybe Dale or somebody could talk about council's oversight of things like that?
You know, would we, do you want to speak to that, Dale? I could speak to it a bit, but you may do a better job.
Hi, Dale Bickel. Does this mic work? I think we just got it fixed recently. So, yeah, Dale Bickel, Chief Administrative Officer. The council by resolution delegated certain powers to the, to the MRA Board, and they do have authority to make expenditures of, of taxpayer dollars, as, as Councilman Cardino said, for most things. The things that are specifically left in the purview of council under that resolution are the ability to, the ability to issue debt, the ability to buy land, and, and the other thing is, is that it has, everything has to be within the budget that is adopted by council. So those are, those are the parameters.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I was going to say that we, we do approve the budget. We approve different bodies, of course, because it's long, long duration, approve forming URDs and changing boundaries to URDs as well as debt issuance. So kind of combination, I guess, of what everyone's saying. Okay, so that question has been answered. Is there any public comment in the room on this topic? And please come up to the microphone and say and spell your last name, and then three minutes, hold on just a second. I'm going to start this. This is our new system. When you get close, it's, it's going to go from green to yellow, and then it'll go to red, and it'll beep, and then your three minutes will be up, and we use this in an effort to keep everything equal between public commenters. So go ahead, and I'm going to start it.
Excuse me, my name is Bob Moore, M-O-O-R-E. I'd like to say thank you. You actually got one member of the city council that understands, I think, what's going on, plus another one, I think, not speaking tonight. Several years ago, Governor Brown, the governor of California, who had 400 projects, we've got six, seven, whatever it is, and he stopped every one of them. He was stealing money from, in our case, citizens of Missoula, and stopped every one of them. That's what he thought of him. A liberal Democrat in California said no to no more welfare payments to people like Getty for his parking garage in California. But what do we do? Millions to the Lambo's family, millions to the Lambo's family, millions to Stockman Bank that's got over $2 billion and over $300 million equity. $50,000 to young organization wanting to change their, what, laundromat, I guess you call it, to a casino. And of course, everybody was for that. We need more casinos, and we need more casinos. We do. So you should be voting to double the amount of contribution so we can get double our number of our casinos in this town and casinos. I asked one of these policemen how many opening positions there are right now in the great state of, great city of Missoula. 10, 10 open policemen. Somebody was up here reporting about killing whoever they were talking about. I didn't get it all. But they're sitting there with 10 open positions, 10 open positions, and we're spending $3 million for that, the MRA is. And MRA goes spending money left and right like crazy. This nominee here is the leader of the MRA, and so he's got to be the main person that is spending the citizens of Missoula into bankruptcy. Or at some point, somebody's going to wake up and do something about it, and I would think it ought to be now.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Would you, could just go ahead and stand up, come to the microphone, spell your last name, and then you have three minutes on this topic.
Big K. Montana, S-P-I-T-Z-M-A-C-H-R.
Could I stop you for just a second? I'm trying to get this to read. How do I do that? Okay, got it.
Big K. Montana, Spitzmacher, S-P-I-T-Z-M-A-C-H-R. First of all, I used somebody else's Wi-Fi to send you an email. It's called Woke Agenda of Missoula. I've got some specific internet information to the fact that we don't care. And believe me, I've been victimized by the victimizers at the Pauvarello Mountain Line, Free Cycle, that they're afraid that I'm going to do something, Matt Wokenum, to them, and Dr. John R. La, a substantial individual of this city.
Mr. Spitzmacher, is this, the, right now is public comment on the MRA appointment of Mr. England?
I'm sorry, I thought this was, um...
Not quite. If you hold on just a few minutes, we're going to get down to that pretty soon.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay, thank you. Is there any other comment in the room? Okay, I think we have one hand up online. Matt Larson, I'm going to stop that. Could you unmute?
Yes, Matt Larson, 43. Carl England has been on MRA's board for quite some time. If, if you look at his application, it looks like it's from the 90s. And it looks like it's the same application. So it feels like this is a rubber stamp, kind of endeavor here with the council, and it seems as though the community is asking for a closer look into MRA's endeavors and MRA's organization. So it would seem as though we could use some fresh minds there. Mr. England is also the, I believe he's also a representative for the police union, which may, I mean, I don't know, these are, these are all just small-town facts. It's, it's, it's just, it could be a conflict, it might not be, but it's, it's facts, and it's, it's troublesome when we, when we think of the, the community at large here and like how these projects over, overlap the bank and the, the way businesses all donate to these paternal organizations and XYZ. It's, it's pretty easy to, like, find a conflict there. So I, I would think that we should, we should try and put some new blood in MRA and try and put a, a fresh perspective on it, especially as the community asks for, for that exactly. And it's up to the city council to do these things. But again, we see the city council rubber-stamping the same old thing over and over again, which does the same thing to the morale of the, the city at large and the citizens at large who have to pay the bill. We all seem to have the same kind of tone as Mr. Moore. We're, we're kind of fed up with it, so I guess we'll see how this vote goes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any more comment? All right, so are there any comments from council before? Actually, we need you to make the motion, right? So go ahead and make a motion. Yes, I move...
Yes, I move that we confirm the mayor's reappointment of Carl England to the Missoula redevelopment agency for a term beginning May 1st, 2024 and expiring on April 30th of 2028.
Thanks, and we've taken public comment on that. I think we've had some council comment, but if there's additional council comment, feel free to raise your hand. I don't see any, so let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
All right, we're going to do a roll call vote for appointing Carl England to the M R A. Anderson.
Yes.
Vissera.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino.
No.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jordan. Nelson.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
And Vaseka.
No.
Is Jordan on? I didn't quite hear her vote.
Yeah, I didn't. Kristen, are you on? I see her, I just don't. Let's, I guess let's count her absent for this vote. Oh, no, she's, there she is, okay. She, oh, she can't unmute herself maybe. She says no. With her thumb.
So that is six in favor and three opposed.
Okay, thanks, so that passes. And then the other item that we had was from Public Works and Mobility. And this is a resolution supporting the city of Missoula's multimodal project discretionary grant application. And why don't you go ahead and make that? I did it backwards last time, so why don't you make the motion and then we'll do any questions and go to public comment from there.
Okay, I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign a resolution to support the intent of and project contained in the 2024 M P D G grant application.
Great, thanks. So we had a presentation on this last week, but it did not pass unanimously. We do have Aaron Wilson here to answer questions. Are there any questions from council? Myrta.
Yeah, during the presentation last week, we heard about what the benefits could be to the community and the state, really, if we are lucky enough to receive these funds. And I just wanted to know, Aaron, if you could kind of give us a few examples of what, you know, what those funds could do in the community should we get those grant, that grant?
Yeah, Aaron Wilson, Public Works and Mobility. And so there's a number of benefits. There's the benefits of actually getting the project done, which are more about the on the ground benefits. But then there's also the financial benefit of receiving these grant funds. We're finding Russell Street is, you know, an expensive project. It costs a lot of money to do roadway reconstructions. And so what we're finding is that it's just tying up our federal funds for a really long time to try to get this project delivered. And so every year it delays, it gets more expensive. We have to have more funding to find, to fill the gaps. And so we're kind of just in this endless cycle of trying to find the funding to get the project done. And it just ties up our federal discretionary or federal formula funds that we get to program through the M P O. So if we get grant funding, it frees up those other state programmed funds and the M P O programmed funds that we could use towards other projects that may be smaller or local priorities. And there's a whole list of those from the Long Range Plan and our ongoing C I P for the city. So essentially, these federal funds allow us to have more flexibility in how we program our locally allocated federal funding.
Thanks. And while the design and engineering parts for this project are kind of set right now, could you go over just really quickly on how there will still be opportunity for tweaking a few small but perhaps really important components of this project so that we can see increased connectivity and safety for pedestrians and all modes of transportation?
Yep, so there are certain elements of this project that were defined and identified and approved in the environmental impact assessment and the record of decision. Essentially, what that does is, you know, once you start using federal funds and you go through that environmental review process, you've essentially made those decisions on what the purpose and need of the project is and what the preferred alternative to address that purpose and need. And so that's where we're at now. We have a design, kind of an overall design for Russell Street. But within that, there's a lot of decision making we can do on, you know, things like where do we need safe crossings? How do we design those? What are the specific ways that we can adequately address transportation safety for all of the modes? So things that we're looking at are like signal, signal timing and how you accommodate bicycle and pedestrian crossing to avoid conflicts with vehicles. We can look at crossing locations, what types of improvements we can put in to make that safe to get across the roadway we're designing. And then how we design the bicycle and pedestrian facilities or even the vehicle travel lanes to make them, you know, appropriate for an urban context. There's a lot of pieces that we're trying to accommodate with Russell Street. You know, it is a regional corridor. It needs to accommodate freight, it needs to accommodate moving people. But it also needs to be designed so that it's not a barrier for the neighborhoods. And so those are the kinds of decisions we can make as we go forward. And we'll certainly have a lot of opportunity to weigh in on that.
Thanks. Any other questions from council? Sandra?
I just wanted to ask that on the attachments, it says the presentation and, what was it, the presentation and information and the referral regarding this project were on there, but the presentation isn't on there. I was hoping to get those slides on there.
Yes, I will make sure those get up there, yeah.
Sorry to long wind when we say that.
Yeah.
That's great, I appreciate that. You always do that because it's helpful for us to go back and look at them sometimes as well. Okay, without any other questions from council, I'm going to go to public comment on this item. So this one's, your non-agenda items are coming up, but go ahead, let me get this started. Okay, go ahead, you'll need to state your name and spell it again.
Big K Montana, S P I T Z M A C H E R. When is this project scheduled to possibly be done?
So this isn't, isn't a back and forth, but go ahead and make your comment and then someone might take your question up.
Yeah, it's an interesting project on Russell Street. I ride it on the bicycle and I do it really well against traffic and how I maneuver it to do with traffic. My safety and so forth on these streets are safer against traffic in the city because I know who's going to hit me instead of who's not going to hit me. But the problem is, what kind of timeframe are we looking at on some of these projects that we have? And why do we got to rely, why can't funds be appropriately realized to get her done?
Thank you for your comment. And Aaron, do you want to answer that question? I think that's good to have on the record.
Yep, so if we get this grant funding, there are statutory, federal statutory timeframes when we would have to have it complete. And so essentially, construction would have to be done by 2031 in order to meet the grant timelines for this project. And so it seems like a long time away, but these projects do take a while to get through the design and get funding in place and then the construction timeline. If we don't get the grant, I think we're on a much longer timeframe just because we don't currently have the funding to get the whole project done. And so it will likely either be piecemeal or will be delayed and who knows how long until we can actually find the amount of funding we need to get it constructed.
Great, thanks. And again, this is, this is just to prove and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution, so to apply for the grant. So right now, we're just trying to get the money to do the project. Is there any other council comment? Daniel.
Yeah, I think getting grant funds to help fix Russell is a great idea. I think expanding Russell from two to three lanes to five lanes is a terrible idea. It's going to be very dangerous. People are going to get hurt. People are going to lose their lives on this street because of the design. It's a dangerous design. I think we don't need to consent as a city to M D T's plans. I understand that M D T's design plans probably won over what the city would ideally do. But I don't think we should consent to making a giant five lane road like this through our town. It's very dangerous and we could do better. So I'm going to vote no against, against this.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments from council before we go to vote? Okay, Sandy, you go first.
Just for a clarification, because I wasn't here when this was originally presented. So the five line lane is two lanes each way and then a center lane for turning. Is that correct, similar to the elections office? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Bob, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am president. I'm just curious, with that 2031 deadline, if we do get the grant, if push came to shove, I know there's been issues with right of way purchase along the way, particularly again to 5th, 6th, 7th Streets and that corridor there. Push came to shove, would there be a role for eminent domain in the process?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's always a last resort. And the state has been successful on other projects that it required right of way, including the first phase of this project where there was right of way required from all of those properties as it went through. And they were able to successfully negotiate that. And so it can extend things to some, to some degree. But the nice part is that we're already working on advanced right of way acquisitions. So as properties come up for sale, the state has gone in and purchased those. So it's not, you know, having to negotiate with the property owner. They're already trying to sell. And so they've acquired seven properties and two are currently under negotiations right now for sale. And so those, that process is already underway, which puts us in a good position to actually meet the federal deadlines.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Stacy, go ahead.
Thanks so much, Madam Chair. My question is for Aaron in regards to safety and how is that taken into consideration when adopting, drafting, and working with M D T on plans?
Yeah, so we have, obviously, we take an approach of safety is the highest priority. And we have a project charter that we've worked on with the state to try to get to the same point of how are we approaching design on this project? And safety is the highest priority. And there are, I think there are ways you can design a five lane road so that it is not dangerous for the people who are using it. And we even see that in the section that has already been completed. We saw a reduction of crashes. So pre-construction, and we only have about two years post-construction to look at. But we've seen a decrease in the number of crashes on that section. So it is appearing to be safe. Hopefully, that trend continues. But there, safety should always be our highest priority. And that is how we, as the city, would approach this project in working with, with M D T as a partner.
Do you have any follow-ups?
No, I appreciate you reiterating that the city's policy is safety first from the transportation planning experts. I think that's important to reiterate. Thanks so much.
Thanks, okay, so we've taken public comment. We're going to go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Okay, going to do a roll call vote on approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution to support the intent of and project contained in the 2024 M P D G grant application. Anderson.
Yes.
Mayor Sarah.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino. Farmer.
Yes.
Jordan.
Okay, so she might need to turn on her camera. I think she's having a hard time. Kristen?
Okay, we'll move on. Nelson?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vaseka?
Yes.
I don't actually see Kristen in the meeting anymore. Okay, so she's not, she needed to go, I guess.
Okay, so the vote is eight in favor and one opposed.
Okay, thank you, so that passes. And now we are into public comment on non-agenda items. If you want to come on up and spell your name again. And you have three minutes and I'll start the timer here.
Big K Montana, S P I T Z M A C H E R. I'm here in regards to this wokeness and this deceit of these facilities that we've visited in Missoula, which first one would be Mountain Line. How I woke to it and how you don't have to be sleeping on the bus. I end up at the cash box as you see the bus driver's foot go through the floor and you end up in the emergency room and you're grateful it didn't take out your spine. The second one is Free Cycle. How Free Cycle feels, I'm not woke enough to be there because I think a lot of K G V O and the people that talk to it. And the last comment that I heard last Friday, you don't want to hear how the listeners have conveyed and so forth. And the last one that I'm going to recite is the Palverello. I'd rather go to Dal Shao Ping or Mr. Putin. I'd get a better deal. Or Kim Jong Young, to the fact that I never used the P word as a staff member heard in regards to a theft organization that has a item number that has not been followed up by anybody, absolutely nobody, not even public safety. And it's a theft of a cash value. Cash value is probably not the principle. It's the ethics of not following up responsible of the Palverello management. And the secondly is the P word is not used, but I certainly use the four letter C word very well, but you don't like it for the fact that the malicious intent, I emphasize on the staff members and I emphasize the management, which would be Jill Bonnie and Claire Bopp in regards to Christie C Patton. The C stands for that specific four letter C word that I heard at the Palver, at the Johnson Center, there's no 11-year-old boys here for you. And I understand what that means. And it gets regarded by the staff, which would be Kyle and Jim. And I suspect rubber stamped by Christie Patton. That's the equalization to the fact that we're saying, go rape out your daughter. And the parents say, do a better job on my granddaughter next time to the rapist. That's the equivalent, how I feel. And you as councilmen that finance the Johnson Center and who finances the Palverello Center? And what I heard the best of the Wednesday meeting on the mayor's on the homeless was that wonderful guy, Mark of the Chamber of Commerce. Did you hear him? Do you listen? Do those people pay substantial amount of taxes to the city?
Okay, so now we have, we have anyone else in the room for public comment? Great, come on up and spell your name again. And this is on non-agenda items or suppose agenda items too, if you want to talk about this.
My name is Bob Moore, M O O R E. I've heard several comments here in this room tonight about safety. The city cares about safety. The city does not care about safety or they're incompetent, one or the other. For 15, close to 15 years, I tried to get the mayor, the deceased mayor, to put proper signs at Flynn and Broadway. He never did it. Despite me just about begging him to do it, to properly sign that intersection, he never did it. What happened? Man was killed at the intersection, a pedestrian was killed. Where was the safety on that sign? Today, there's an intersection at Flynn and Mary Jean. Poorly, poorly designed street, especially the one coming from Mary Jean. Couple of weeks ago, maybe more, I'm coming down Mary Jean, going over to Broadway, and this young lady is sitting in the street, holding her legs where she'd just been hit by a truck.
hit by a truck coming from Flynn. We got through the streets straight. Crazy, no sense in it whatsoever. Improper sign all the way through it. But the developer now has another three or four feet for his house project or whatever is going to be, he's going to put there. Anybody care about that wreck? You think I'm lying? Go to police department, get the report, see what happened. Another point on that same road, Mary Jane, with all those apartments there on the other side is the drinking place. Too narrow, way too narrow. If you've ever been on that street, it's a disgrace how they allowed that to be. But you can always see the developer's got more square footage to add another house. Today, today, a car came within six inches, I would say, between those apartments. The road is too narrow to be allowing the traffic to go there. And you do nothing about it. That girl probably, I don't know what happened to the girl, but she was unable to get up.
Thank you. Is there any more comment in the room? Please come up to the microphone and spell your name.
Robert Dunlop, D U N L O P. I live at 2316 West Kent. I'm not familiar with the Pavarello. I haven't been in there two or three years. When I was in there, I tell you, it takes a special person that would work there. And the city should be glad that you do have personnel there. I do go to the Johnson Center quite frequently. The staff there is very helpful. When I think I can identify a person that happens to be there that I might be able to help, they've been very good about trying to locate that person and help them progress on their way. So I'd be loath to be too critical of these people that have to work day in and day out. It really takes a special person with a lot of patience and understanding. So for the most part, I'm glad that you do have these people. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, is there any, are there any more comments in the room? Okay, so we'll go online. I think I see one hand up. Matt Larson, can you unmute and I'll start the timer?
Yeah, Matt Larson, more three. It's a, it's deeply disrespectful and hurtful for the city council to consistently make unhoused people, elderly individuals, and those with disabilities wait for an unspecified amount of time and often more than an hour just to get to the general comment period of their local city council meeting. This practice not only marginalizes some of the most vulnerable members of our community, but it also undermines their ability to participate in the democratic process. It sends a message that their voices and concerns are not valued or prioritized, perpetuating systematic inequalities. Additionally, the lack of accessible contact information, such as the central email address for all city council members, further exacerbates these issues. Taking down the to all email address makes it difficult for all residents to reach out to the, the city council as a, as a collective, and it further alienates and marginalizes this group. The city council must prioritize accessibility, inclusivity, and ensuring that all residents have equitable opportunities to participate and be heard in decision-making processes. Anything less is a disservice to the principles of democracy and human dignity. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, so we have taken public comment on non-agenda items and communications from the mayor. I am not the mayor, but since I'm sitting in the seat tonight, I'll do my, say what I want to say tonight first. I just wanted to send out my condolences to a family in town whose son was in a motorcycle accident this weekend at Craig and Orange. We have on this body had a lot of conversation about that. I, I think the, the mother's very open and on Facebook about it, so I think it's okay to say that he is, he is still in the hospital and, and they are dealing with, with a lot right now. So I send my condolences and my, hopefully, good, good luck because sometimes life is luck as well. So, but I also wanted to say that we do have a plan for that intersection. I think we are aware that it is a dangerous intersection that is at Craig and Orange Street. The design and review for that is being done in 25, 25, I think. Erin can correct me. He's over there if I'm wrong. And then it will be built out in 26. So these things do take a long time. Planning for them takes a long time, but I just wanted to point out that we are, we are aware that that is a dangerous intersection and we are working on correcting that. So just thinking about that family tonight, I'm going to, I think I'm going to go ahead and start just to mix things up and to catch people off guard. I'm going to start online tonight. Go ahead, Ms. Anderson.
It's a good thing I was paying close attention and found my off, my off, or my button to turn on my mic. Just wanted to flag a couple of things for some folks, for folks who are listening. We are going to be having a press conference next Monday, the 13th of May, at 1:30 in the afternoon to roll out this really cool system called PulsePoint. And it is something that people who are certified to provide CPR can sign up for and they will get alerted if there is a cardiac emergency in their area. And then they can help render aid because as we have all learned, especially now with around the fire levy, that response times save lives. And especially in cardiac instances, the quicker you can start rendering CPR, the better the chances are of somebody surviving that instance. The press conference will actually be at Glacier Ice Rink, which brings the question of why in the world do you have a press conference like this at the ice rink? Well, it turns out that the hockey rink is a place where a lot of cardiac instances happen. And so we felt like it was appropriate to have that there. So I'm really excited for this to be in our community as we continue to just find ways to better take care of one another. And so there'll be more coming out about that on Monday, but really excited that it's coming to our community. Also, it's an excellent opportunity to remind people about our Smart 911 system that we have here in Missoula. And it is not just signing up for text messages if there's an emergency. It's actually much, much more in depth. I figured this out when I went and, and signed up myself. And there's a way that you can talk about how many rooms your house has, what floors the bedrooms are on, what your pets look like, what their pets' names are, the people who live in your house and any medications that they take or any particular things that, you know, a medical folks or police or fire should know if they get called out to your house. It's incredibly comprehensive and I've asked around and I said, do you actually use this? And they said, absolutely. You definitely use it, you know, and I just thought it was so valuable. It takes a little bit of time, but absolutely 100% worth it. So I encourage everyone to go to smart911.com, register yourself and your family members. God forbid, you'll never have to use it, but it's always better safe than sorry. So cool things happening in our community as we try to provide services and look out for one another. So, and then please, everyone join us at City Club on Monday from 11:30 to 1:00 to hear about updates and all about the fire levy that is being, that is put on the June 4th ballot. Myself and Chief Hughes will be presenting at City Club and we'd love everyone to join us. And that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you. I see that Ms. Jordan is with, is she off again? Okay, I don't see Ms. Jordan. So I'm going to go to Ms. Becerra.
I will pass. Thank you. Ms. Becerra?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that there is a fundraiser for Jefferson Preschool on Wednesday at the Mall Noodles Express. You don't have to donate anything, just 20% of any of your purchases from 11 to 9:00 will go to Jefferson Preschool. And all you have to do is either mention the flyer or bring the flyer. I think you have to bring the digital flyer, but I have it posted on my Facebook page. So if you want Noodles Express at the mall on Wednesday, I would highly encourage you to take a picture of that flyer and have 20% of that purchase go to Jefferson Preschool. That is the special education preschool here in Missoula. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Farmer.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind folks to turn in their ballot if they haven't already. The school board and school levy election is on the ballot for tomorrow. And I think I saw that only 33% of the ballots had been turned in so far. So just remind folks to, if you have it sitting on your table, to turn it in. I think you can drop off till 8:00 PM tomorrow. And if you're not registered, you can also do same day voter registration. And I also wanted to say congratulations to all the graduates. University of Montana's graduation is this Saturday and huge congratulations and special shout out to my nephew, Cade Squires, who's graduating.
Thanks, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am president. A couple of shout outs to my own. First off, so turns out May 6th through May 12th is National Nurses Week. And from the American Nursing Association, they stayed, it's observed annually, always May 6th through May 12th to honor nurses for their commitment and dedication every day of the year. National Nurses Week grew out of congressional resolution and proclamation signed by President Ronald Reagan in 1982, deeming May 6th National Recognition Day for nurses. And just a shout out to those folks, you know, the passion they have to do the work they do on the dedication day in, day out. Just want to give some recognition over that's due. Little bit of personal bias in that regard. I have three family members who are RNs. My son's an RN serving in the Army. And I have a stepdaughter and her partner that are registered nurses up in the Flathead area. And then finally, another shout out to our bailiff, Reserve Officer Twilbeck. It's his last day serving as bailiff, serving as reserve officer, not reserve officer, but for bailiff here. His days are limited on Missoula Police Department. He's accepted a position down in Colorado and it's our loss, our vada, Colorado's gain. But, you know, I wish him the best in his full-time position down there and we'll miss him. So thank you very much for your service.
Daniel, okay. Jennifer?
Oh yeah, I just also wanted to echo Ms. Cheryl's comments about my thoughts being with the family member whose son was really critically injured at that intersection. I've been following that this weekend as well. And I kind of love Ms. Anderson's announcement that this, a press conference this week will be at the hockey rink. I have a friend who was a hockey dad, who we brought kids up through youth hockey together, who his life was saved at the hockey rink on the ice because someone knew how to use a defibrillator. So, thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Appreciate public for coming and that's all, that's all we have, right? Is there anything else on there? I tossed my, okay, great. So we are adjourned.